I'd like to open the town of Wapungers zoning board of appeal meeting for September 23rd, 2025. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, undivided, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Thank you. We will stand under fire.
Understood, sir.
Can I have a roll call, please, B?
Mr. Delacorte?
Here.
Mr. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Ball? Mr. DeMara?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence Zane?
Here. I have a motion to accept the minutes from September 9th, 2025 meeting?
I move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We have one public hearing on tonight. Mr. Chauvin, good evening. How are you tonight? I just want to advise you, since we don't have a full board, you have a right to adjourn your or you can go forward with it tonight.
Just go forward, that's fine.
Very good. So, I'm going to read this into the... This is appeal number 25-7859, area variance. Richard Chauvin seeking an area variance, section 24037 of district in R40 zoning district. Where 50 feet is required to the rear yard property line, the applicant can provide 30.1 feet, thus requesting a variance of 19.9 feet for the construction of a 30 by 12 deck. The property is located at 11 Apple Blossom Lane, on 0.85 acres and is identified as tax grid number 625704957118 in the town of Wapungers. Good evening, sir. Can I please have your name and address for the...
Sure.
Richard, can we open? Chauvin, 11 Apple Blossom. And can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Tell us what you need and why you need it, real quick.
Uh, just the back property line is too close, uh, just for the deck purposes on the rear of the house.
And, uh, we were out there on Saturday... Well, three of us were out on Saturday. I believe you went out Sunday morning and, uh...
Yep.
I think the... Our fifth member who's sick went out this morning.
I think I saw him when I was...
Yeah, um, so we all did get the seat of property. It looks like you've done a lot of work on the house.
Oh, yeah.
The house looks fantastic, but the... That house was there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you haven't... There was no change in footing or...
Footprint?
Yeah.
No, just the front, just the second floor of the front.
Okay. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions, Mr. Chauvin?
I just want... I don't have a question. I just want to remark that it's a... It's a very short backyard.
Yeah. Property's tight.
No further questions.
Nobody else? Nothing else? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to step forward and talk about this? Anyone at all? No? So I obtain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I will have a motion to grant or deny the variance requested.
I would make a motion to, uh, grant the variance based on the fact that, um, the property is, uh, so short in the back, um, you really don't have another way of, of, you know, achieving this benefit and, and you're not asking for a large deck in the back. It seems pretty reasonable given the size of the house and the property. Um, it's not an undesirable change to the neighborhood. Nobody's going to be able to see it except, uh, the owner. Um, the request is substantial, uh, as we're asking for several feet, but, um, you know, there's really no other way you could do it. So, um, and there's absolutely no, uh, environmental implications to you building this deck. So I'd like to move to grant the variance.
Second.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, please, B?
Mr. DeMara?
Yes.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zane?
Yes. So your application's been granted, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I believe the building department won't be in touch with you.
They'll hear from the building department in a few days soon as we get all this paperwork in.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Have a good day.
Hi, Rebecca. How are you tonight?
Hello, my apologies for running a few minutes late.
We just got started.
I'm going to move on to discussions. We have appeal number 25-7860, area variance. George Castacetes seeking an area variance, section 24037 district regulations in an R40 zoning district. Where 10 feet is to the side yard, left property line is required, the applicant can provide for the legalization of an existing 10 by 15 can provide...
Five.
I think something's missing. Where 10 feet to the side yard, left property line is required, the applicant can provide... I think it's supposed to say five feet, right?
Yes.
For the legalization.
For the legalization of an existing 10 by 15 shed, thus requesting a variance of five feet. The property is located at 26 Relia Terrace on 1.22 acres and is identified as tax grid number 6256-02-608945 in the town of Wapungers. Good evening, sir. Could I have your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. I'm George Castrociadis at 26 Relia Terrace.
How are you tonight?
I'm doing very well. How are you all?
I'm, I'm well, too. Thank you. Um... I think we just got this tonight, I think, right?
Yes.
I think this was just... I had it, yeah. I had it because I came and stopped by the other day. Just, uh, real quick, tell us what you need and why you need it.
Absolutely. The, uh, backyard area, usable area is kind of in odd shape. There's a lot of living trees and drainage, well-submerged propane tank or subterranean propane tank. When we bought the house, there was also an existing shed in that location. Uh, it seemed to be the most fitting, kind of out of the way. Uh, it's not visible from the street. There's a white privacy fence that obscures 95% of the shed. Um, and, uh, the property line, there's a fence there that we have for our dogs. Uh, the fence is not the actual property line, so there is, uh, you know, it's at least five feet, uh, from that side yard. So, uh, because of the triangular shape of the yard, placing the shed anywhere 10 feet away would put it, um, effectively in the exact same position if we were to move it, or it would be kind of in the center of the yard or in some unmanageable location.
So, um, the shed is right up against the fence?
No, it's, uh, set back, uh, a few feet, maybe three or four feet from the, the fence itself.
Okay.
Three or four feet from the fence and the fence is not on the line, I assume?
Correct. The fence is not on the line, but you can also walk around the shed entirely.
And is the, uh, property line marked? Do you know where your property line is exactly or...
Uh, we were working off of, uh, an existing, um, survey that, uh, I got from the town just by kind of Googling the results. Uh, there was a subdivision of the property, um, so that shows actually a pretty fair, um, line from where the edge of the driveway is, um, so that the shed was, you know, significant distance from that. Um, we did have some other work done, installed a deck in the backyard, uh, which we just had inspected. Um, and so we did have a, kind of a revised survey just to show the setbacks and the new location of, uh, that deck that was built in the backyard. Um, so that's kind of what we were working on.
Is the, the deck in the backyard the one that goes around the pool? Is that...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So you're having, uh, is the deck, the pool put in already?
So, the... He has an open permit for the deck around the pool and the hot tub. It all came in on one permit, but we segregated it. That's why I gave you a copy of his open permit for all the other items to tell you that he's in the process of legalizing all of them. So the only thing that still needs to be legalized separate from that is this shed.
That's correct. We did meet with Susan today on the, the shed, uh, excuse me, the pool, electrical and the hot tub electrical, and all of that was signed off on. You just need the, uh, electrical inspector to email in the final results.
So just walking around, have you been able to find any pins or anything for the mark to delineate the property line at all?
Yeah, there are stone monuments, uh, around the property, um, but because it was subdivided, those existing stone monuments are not part of the new subdivision. That was from 2020, I believe.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I can see it's a real odd-shaped piece of pie you got there.
Yeah, it's not all grass either. It's lots of living trees and drainage and just a ton of stuff.
Lot of different angles in your property.
And, and, uh, obviously, we would just move the shed to avoid the headache. It's one of those deals where, uh, if you were to touch it, it would probably fall over. It's in good shape as it is, but, uh, boy, it was a pain to, to get stood up the first time.
Okay, I, um, okay. I understand. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
No.
No? Nothing? Okay, so, uh, normally what we like to do is come out and take a look, all right? The board in its entirety. Um, we usually plan that for Saturday mornings, which would be... October 11th, Saturday morning. Um, we usually 10, 15 minutes, and if you could try and mark your property line to the best of your ability where the actual property line is, so we can figure out how far the shed is from the property line, that would...
Sure, uh, I won't be home. I have an obligation, uh...
That, that's fine. You don't need to be there, but just if you could just mark that property line for us, you know, um, a couple of stakes, a line and anything you could do.
Spray paint?
Yeah, a little orange paint, anything like that, just to...
Dotting?
So we know where the line is?
Yeah.
That would be great to help us.
Absolutely. Be happy to do that.
So we will schedule the site visit for October 11th at 9:00 AM. You don't, you don't need to be there.
Okay.
It's fine. As long as if, if there is going to be anybody there, just let them know that we're stopping by. I'll usually go knock on the door anyway, just to tell them that we're there. I don't want to scare anybody.
Don't have your dogs out.
No, they'll be with us.
They bark very loudly.
And then we'll schedule this for a public hearing on October... October 15th?
October 14th.
October 14th at 7 o'clock. And you just saw the process that we go through for... It's usually a pretty quick process.
Works for me.
Okay? Other than that, I think B has some stuff for you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you then.
Okay. Moving on, appeal number 25-7861, area variance Hudson Valley Volkswagen, seeking an area variance, section 24037 district regulations in an HB zoning district, highway business zoning district. Where 25% minimum landscape and open space is required, the applicant can provide 23% for landscaping space, thus requesting a variance of 2%. Where 75% maximum pervious surface is required, the applicant is proposing 77% to allow for additional parking area, thus requesting a variance of 2%. The property is located at 1148 Route 9 on 4.6 acres and is identified as tax grid number 615704690127 in the town of Wapungers. Good evening, sir. Could I have your name and...
Good evening. Brian Was from Dasticosa Engineering here on behalf of the applicant.
How are you tonight, sir?
We're doing okay.
Great. So, uh, real quick, just what do you need and why do you need it?
The dealership is thriving, um, and for some time now they've basically exhausted the, uh, their available space for storage of new cars and the service center, and so they're seeking to expand the buildings slightly to increase the service area, cars in and out faster, add an area for you to drop off and valet the cars, um, which is very common. You pull into like Subaru and Volvo, you pull into a garage, drop it off for service and, uh, to, for the new inventory. Uh, currently, they are basically out of space, with the exception of the storm park on in this area that was part of the original approval back in 97 and the subsequent 98 amendment. Uh, this was considered in 2015. We're basically going to fill it in with a chamber system, so we still provide the storage, but now we can park cars on top of it. They never built it out in 2015 and they're out of options. There's no, there's no place else to go in here. It's in the back. We don't foresee anybody seeing this, the back of property. That's all for the use of the dealership. There's no public access back there intended. So...
Okay. So the, uh, you're looking to expand out the back and covering the... Did I hear you say you're going to cover the pond or fill in the pond?
Yes, it's, it's acting like a detention pond right now. There's a culvert that, right at the water level that just lets the water as it... It gives it a place to store it and then release it gradually. So we are going to fill those in with chambers, underground chambers, uh, and put, um, gravel on top of that, and you can park cars around on top of it. It'll remain... It'll remain pervious, but...
So basically the cars are just inventory? That's what they are, right?
Inventory cars that you're looking to park. Anybody, yes. Anybody goes by, you can see that they're everywhere. They can cram them right now and they'd like to correct any of that. And there's no other option here for us to go any farther out.
It doesn't include the dirt parking garage, right? We're not, you're not talking about the dirt parking next to the pond?
Next to the... That's going to be encompassed. This is before the planning board right now. Uh, they're already utilizing that. They have for some time, um, since the original approval was there in 97. I think that was contemplated as gravel parking and they've used it.
But I was just going to ask that, Barb. Should this be before the planning board, before it comes to us?
It is before the planning board.
It is, right?
But because they're seeking two variances, they're here and they have to finish with you before the planning board can continue to give them or not give them approval.
Was this actually referred to us from the planning board?
Yes.
It was, right?
Yes.
That's what I had heard, yes.
Yes, the planning board referred them and told them they needed to come and seek these two variances for the plan to continue in front of them.
Okay. So, I mean, um, does anyone else have any other questions? Anybody else have any other concern?
No concerns. Just, uh, quickly, so you're asking for an impervious surface variance at 2%, right?
Yes.
Okay, and, and I'm sorry if I misunderstood you. So this is going to be a cultech system put under the ground with gravel over top, right? Typical installation, and it's getting paved or it's remaining gravel?
They're leaving this gravel for now.
Okay, so it's, 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 it's pervious?
But it's, I believe on the decode, it's still considered...
Impervious surface. Okay.
As a gravel surface?
Okay.
Um, I, I know you have asked for a 2% less and 2% more. Do you know how much square footage that is? About...
3,973.
And so, yeah, pretty large area.
Yes. Going to be put to good use.
Yeah, no, uh-uh. Um, has Volkswagen, I mean, I don't know if you know this or not, has Volkswagen looked into the, uh, next door property that's completely empty, that's for sale, that's been for sale next to them for a year?
I'm not sure if they took a hard look at it or not, but I know there's a wetland in the back part of our application with the planning board. We are, um, there's a buffer, right? Here's... This area right here...
Mm-hmm.
Is, is, is a wetland. Uh, so we are, part of that application is for the buffer disturbance, just this little corner. But a lot of that property is encumbered by in the rear, and I'm not sure if they've taken a hard look at it engineering-wise to see if it's... How much money that's going to cost, essentially. I mean, that could get very expensive and very time-consuming, and they need the parking now. This is, I mean, this is, an easy thing for, for them to do is install stone chambers, stone, done.
Okay. I, I just, I was wondering, I just, you know, I, I think that was my wondering, not anybody else. So I just know that that property's been sitting there empty for the longest time. It's, you know, we've had a few people approach us about doing different things with it and nothing, so I was just wondering. Um, I'm, I'm just going to ask that our, that B, our secretary, actually ask the planning board if these variances are minimal enough that it will not affect the site and that we can get a letter from the planning board for their, you know, input on this? I think that's really about all I need to ask them, right? I mean, just if it's minimal enough? I, I feel that it is. I mean, when you say 2%, it seems a little...
Small.
Until you're dealing with six and a half acre, seven acre and it becomes a, you know, so I just want to add their input as to if they feel... Is that okay, B? Can you... Vote on it? I'll put it in the form of a motion if that's okay.
Yes.
Can I have a second?
Second.
And could I have... In favor or against?
In favor.
Yay.
Thank you. So, so we're just going to ask for the letter. Again, we have to come out and see the site. I mean, I know this is a working business. Um, I don't know if Saturday mornings is like their crazy time there or would it be, would it be a problem for us to come out on a Saturday morning and see the site?
I, I don't see it as being a problem. I'd have to just verify, um, with Volkswagen if, what their operation entails, if they're busy or not.
I mean, I'm sure we, as the board, would make, you know, adjustments if we had to to come see the site, whether it was on, you know, another day during the week or a weeknight, or I'm sure we could do it, you know, but I, I, that's why I'm asking. So should I just adjourn this out and not wait for the letter from planning board, wait for your answer about site visit, or should I put it on for...
Another discussion.
I mean, if we can tentatively schedule the site visit for next Saturday...
Um, it would be, it would be the following Saturday.
The following Saturday.
The 11th.
It would be October 11th.
We can, um, get word to the board as soon as we can if, if we have to change that. But we like to move forward as quickly as, as possible.
Well, that would be about 9:30 in the morning. We're, it basically takes us 15, 20 minutes, 15 minutes, tops, uh, just to see what's going on there.
Yeah.
Um, if you could be there, that would be great because this is a little more complicated than our normal shed in the backyard, you know, swimming pool is too close to the property and type stuff.
Yep, the... Like until you hit, there's like a, I'd say, I wouldn't call it a tree line, but just where this growth between the pond and the edge of the gravel is filled in over the years. Um, that's all you see from now. If you're really looking hard, you'd never even notice that there's a water body back there.
At least if there's someone we could get...
Yes.
Just that, that, you know, just to, just explain to us real quick on the site what's, what's happening.
Yeah, where, where the 2% is, is what I would like to see.
So we'll tentatively schedule this for October 11th, 9:30 AM, and then we'll put it on for a public hearing for October 14th, 15th?
14th.
14th at 7 o'clock. And I believe B might have some... Does, does anyone else have any other questions here or...
No, I think, uh, I think what you were talking about, having the site visit with, uh, someone from the engineering firm present to really give us a good explanation of...
Yeah, what we're looking at. Yeah, I, I believe so, too. I mean, it would really be helpful.
That's fine. I want to say a lot of the areas we're currently in here, in here where it's gravel and you can, you'll see the cars, they're, they're parked in there as tight as they can get them in there, um, and there's a high turnover rate. If you want to help the cause, feel free to test drive a Volkswagen or Volvo, I mean, if you want to.
Is this sign and drive? Don't they, aren't they...
It's busy back there.
I think so.
So, so then we'll, uh, so we, we, we should be able to get the letter from our, from the planning board by then.
So B will write the letter and send it to them, and they have a meeting on the 6th, so I'm sure they'll answer, and then B will send you their response.
That'll be, that'll be enough time, right? Yeah. So, yeah, and then, uh, yeah, so we'll just leave it scheduled like this. If, if that Saturday will be a problem, please get back to one of them and then they can reach out to us and then we can try and make some adjustments for it.
That's fine.
I don't see how it will be because, you know, we're just...
Public place.
I mean, if the parking's going to be a problem, we can meet somewhere else and all jump in one car or something like that, too.
It honestly doesn't take that long to walk the site. Um, I've been there. I park in the front here, able to walk the whole thing, um, easily, uh, as long as you go sideways in between some of the cars.
Okay.
You'll be able to see.
You know, I just, I don't want to disrupt the business, basically.
No, we'll, we'll make it brief and, uh, we'll, we'll cover everything.
Okay, that'd be great. That'd be fantastic. Anything else? No? Okay. Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate yours.
Yeah, thank you.
Hopefully see you Saturday.
Yeah.
Well, not this Saturday, but...
Week from Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on. We have 33 Middle Bush, appeal number 25-7858, interpretation, 33 Middle Bush LLC, seeking an interpretation of section 240-105B 2A of district in an R2040 zoning district. The applicant is seeking an interpretation of the term contractor's storage to define acceptable users, tenant or owner of the building space in compliance with a previously used variance for the property. The property is located at 33 Middle Bush Road on 1.75 acres and is identified as tax grid number 615701414840 in the town of Wapungers. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Can I have your name and...
My name is Francis Brian Paz. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant, and I'm of counsel to Jacobowitz and Associates that are attorneys for the applicants. Um, if I may approach, I have an affidavit from a potential purchaser of this property that I'd like to give to...
Yeah, absolutely. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And, um, one other item, which unfortunately I don't have, um, copies of because my clients obtained these, I believe, earlier today. They are signed letters from people that live in the immediate area of this property that basically says they don't have any issues with what's being requested.
Are each one of those letters individual, separate? They're all letters?
They're, they're, it's the same letter, signed by four different individuals who live in the immediate area. Someone had 36 Middle Bush Road, 37 Middle Bush Road, 30 Middle Bush Road, and this one, the person's handwriting is difficult to read. It looks like it says 3 or 5 Kameli Drive, which I think is a side road that goes off of Middle Bush right near this property.
Could you just, um, bring them over to secretary, please? B, could we get copies? Would it be possible?
Yeah, I think that would, that would be good, if you wouldn't mind.
I apologize.
That's... It, it would be good, right? We're back for us to get the copies, yeah? It's the way we can look at it all. If you can hold on one second, Counselor, can we just finish reading this and just wait for my secretary to come back, please? Thank you.
I thought I had a lot of toys. I thought I had a lot of toys.
Barb, in this case, uh, when the applicant would, uh, well, would they be required to send out these, uh, forms like, uh, other applicants do for zoning?
No, they'll have a public hearing, and then the public hearing notice goes out, certified return receipt...
Right.
To all the properties around it.
Okay, that would be almost the same thing, right?
Well, they don't have to answer the other.
Yeah.
It's just letting them be notified, so if they want to come and speak for or against it, they have that right.
This would be considered, I guess, a more positive, uh...
Well, I, apparently somebody went door to door to get these.
Yeah, okay.
Chairman, I suspect that after counsel makes his presentation, I will probably have some comments and direction for the board.
Absolutely, absolutely, I was gonna.
Thank you so much.
And counsel, just another couple minutes, so we can just peruse these that you just handed.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I see that these are all Mr. Parisi, that he went around and asked these neighbors?
Actually, it's Ms. Parisi. Just so everybody, thirty-three Middle Bush LLC is not some faceless limited liability company. The members of the company are right here, Francis Parisi and John Favella, their husband and wife. They've been going through this process for, you folks probably know, eight or nine years with this property. And, um, they finally have a potential purchaser, and it's kind of like in a gray area, I think. And they're hoping that, um, this board can give an interpretation that would allow a sale to this individual to use it for the purposes that he wants. I think there was, the issue, I guess on some level is contractor storage. First of all, what is a contractor? Is a contractor somebody who contracts with somebody else for something? I don't, I don't know. And storage, if it's a contractor that does, uh, work on, you know, real property, et cetera, all the contractors I know and that I represent have substantial, um, autos, trucks, um, skid steers, from, you know, backhoes, et cetera. And at least from what I saw in the paperwork, all of that certainly should be allowed at this property. And the property was set up so there could be up to three contractors that were, I believe, you know, could rent the property and store their stuff, no outside storage, no outside vehicles, and none of that, that continues. That's not anything that my clients are looking to change whatsoever. What they're hoping to allow would be the person who wants to buy it once, apparently has a large collection of cars, has, uh, both some, you know, um, quads and other recreational vehicles, but it'd be used for storage. And that storage and the impact it would have out on Middle Bush Road would be de minimis compared to what three separate contractors going in and out on a daily basis, running their businesses would pose for that same location and that same property. So, um, you know, it's, it's been a long haul for them. They never anticipated that they had to completely replace this building, and that was a significant expense for them. And it's, it has caused a hardship for them, and they finally have somebody who might be interested in buying it. They haven't, they haven't gone to contract yet because of this issue, and they'd like to be able to do that. And I think the potential purchaser would like to be able to do that, but just wants to know if he buys, can he do what he's looking to do?
Okay, um, this was, I believe this was originally done in twenty fifteen?
Sixteen to seventeen.
Fifty, so between ten and eight years ago. Right, is that what we're talking about? I mean, when, when they originally, I don't know if this is an answerable question or not, but when they originally came in and wanted the contractor storage area, or contracted, did they have a feeling that it wasn't gonna work that way? Or, I mean, how, how did it become a problem, you know? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I do, and I think probably the pandemic had something to do with it also. Like it's impacted and affected so many people, so many businesses. And then, of course, the fact that when they were looking to redo the building, then it had to be completely replaced. So they, they incurred an expense that they never anticipated that they would have to. And so, so now they'd like to basically turn over their investment and maybe get a little tiny bit back on a sale, and, uh, you know, so it's the, kind of the first, you know, decent possibility they've had over, like, for the nine-year period.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything?
Rebecca, it's a special use permit?
So.
For limited use?
There's a few moving pieces. If you may recall, I believe the applicant threw a Realtor and an architect made a presentation. I believe in May, we were in the senior citizens center at the time. And at that time, the request was somewhat, I'll call a hybrid, to kind of keep the contractor storage facility with accessory office spaces. That's what the decision from two thousand sixteen states, contractor storage facility with accessory office spaces. And also then some personal storage. And as you recall, I expressed concern at that time, because they were somewhat in the use variance realm, but some, somewhat out of it. And now the application has somewhat shifted, and from what my understandings were with some discussions that Barbara and I had with, uh, this council's colleague, Marsha Jacobowitz, was that they were gonna seek an interpretation of the term contractor storage facility with accessory office spaces, to get it defined. And I think along with that, determine whether or not the use of their purchaser meets that. The one thing, though, that comes out to me in reading this affidavit is, it's still, the facts are a little bit different than my last understanding. This seems to be almost entirely personal storage. Now, the way, as you know, your jurisdiction is, is you hear things on an appeal after a determination's been made. Your code zoning administrator, I know that's not your full title, but I always get your full title wrong, has made a determination regarding what was previously proposed, whether or not that fits within the use variance. And she decl, she declined that, and it got to you. However, the facts are a little different right now. So I think Ms. Ribery has to make a determination as to what use this complies with. I don't know if she wants to make any preliminary comment right now, but the facts are a little bit different, because it was always my understanding that they still wanted to rent out to contractors, and that is not appearing in this affidavit.
Well, in, actually, and, uh, in the affidavit, one of the last things it mentions is that if there, if he indeed used the entire building, one third, one of the smaller, he would rent out to someone who would be using, basically stores similar type of stuff.
So. But commer, but I see the phrase "commercial storage," not contractor storage, which are different things.
And I, wow.
So I think what needs to be clear, when they were before this board, eight years ago, they were here to have contractors, and a lot of the minutes will show, they spoke of plumbers and electricians, and people that could come, put their supplies inside and park their trucks there at night. That's what this was based on. And I'm not saying it's wrong to try other, I'm just saying that's not what the intent of the first use variance is. This, this now is looking to seek two other types of storage. One is personal, like you'd have at your own house, and one is commercial storage, like a guardian's storage, where people pay to store. So I guess my issue has been, if the ZBA wants to amend it, it's fine, but they are not the same three uses, even though they all have storage in their title.
And, and the personal storage would be consistent with the storage that a contractor might have and use, because contractor would have cars, trucks, et cetera, and that's part of what this person is indicating, that they, you know, the, the largest part of their storage would be. Like we said, and, and I understand, you know, some of the, uh, conversations, but, you know, the, the, the thought is that storage consistent with what had been approved, um, and the reason for the interpretation.
Thank you.
The reason for the interpretation is that, um, you know, person just wants to know, buy the building? I can use it, you know, for, primarily for himself, yes. Now, he could be a contractor, and he could store stuff in it. Would that be contractor storage? So if, if it would qualify that anybody, a contractor, could store whatever in it, then, you know, that might be the interpretation that would, you know, fit here and, and work for this property.
If I may, I think the, um, the wording "commercial storage" might be throwing off a little bit. I don't think that was the intended wording.
Ma'am, I just, I need your name. I need your.
I'm Francis Parisi, I am a member of the LLC.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Yes. I just wanted to clarify the term "commercial storage" that's in the affidavit. I believe they intended to put contractor storage, the same use, so that would be two different uses, not three. Thank you.
Welcome. I just, uh, jumping over to one of the le, did you see the letters? Did you get a chance to read the letters?
I did.
Only because I'm reading in the first chapter, um, regarding the building at thirty-three Middle Bush, approved contractor storage. It says, it's approved for contracts, we must appear before the board, obtain broadened definition approval, buyer might use the additional garage bays for rental of contractor storage as well. Full transparency. Which is why we ask for current approved use plus personal storage of vehicles. So it, it sounded more to me like in this letter that he wants to be used for some personal storage and then rented out to contractors. Am I not, am I reading that letter right?
The, the potential purchaser, if he doesn't use the entire building himself, would, if a contractor came along and wanted the, he would love to rent out the one bay probably to that person. So yes, it would be, that part would certainly be consistent. It's simply a matter of, can a, a owner store their own property, which would be consistent with a contractor who owns the property that he's storing in there, store it there? I mean, um, and, and as I said, one of the advantages here is that it would be a much lower impact, you know, at the property, to the neighborhood, et cetera, than three separate contractors who were operating, because I think the approval's allowed for an office for each contractor, so that might be a, a, office worker or a secretary, so you'd have those two vehicles going in and out on a daily basis. Equipment would be going in and out if the contractor, you know, had a good business on a daily basis. And that, in this case, we don't think will, I mean, it's probably, would be no more than ten percent, tops, of those kind of trips that would happen under this scenario.
So you understand my confusion a little bit, because on the first one, on, on the actual application, it did point out that you wanted to have possibly commercial storage, or personals, or rental, rented for personal storage.
And, and.
And now it seems like in the letter, it wants to be the owner's personal storage, and if there's any room left, he'll rent it out to contractor, and that's it.
I think that's.
Those are the two things.
Yeah, I, I think that's certainly what, uh, this person would like to see.
The wholesale is teetering on this? The wholesale is teetering?
Well, I, I, if, if they don't get some kind of interpretation that allows this purchaser, I, I think, yes, this, because they haven't gone to contract.
What's to stop him from becoming a DBA and be, becoming a contractor?
Probably nothing. Probably nothing. Right, and what's to stop anybody from setting up a DBA and becoming a contractor? That's why we were looking for an interpretation that, you know, maybe could qualify this under here, so you don't have to jump through those kind of fake hoops that someone easily could.
In other words, he wants it all done before he buys it.
I, I think he would like that, yes, obviously.
If, if I may, I think one thing I would recommend is the, the applicant had previously put in an application, I think, to expand a use variance. I think that application with the interpretation really need to run in parallel with each other, to modify the existing use variance, because the board approved the use in two thousand sixteen, and it, it approved one specific use on the guise that no other uses could make a reasonable rate of return. Now, if we're going to be having like a hybrid use, then I think the board needs to consider whether or not it's amenable to amending that use variance, because that's where the arguments as to the lesser intense. So in other words, as opposed to permitting all four bays to be contractor, would the board have an appetite? And I'm just throwing out possible procedural paths, I'm not telling you what I, my personal thoughts are. But when it comes to whether or not something fits within a use, it's not whether or not it's more intense or less intense, does it need the definition? Is the question.
And that's the question, and that is the question, because there is no definition, as I understand it. So that's why we've, we came here seeking an interpretation, so if, if the board interprets it with a definition that will suit what this, what we're telling the board that this person would like to do, then that should, from my perspective, be sufficient.
I, I find the argument that personal storage fits within contractor storage to be difficult.
So in the code, based on my interpretation, self-storage rental warehousing, where people pay to rent space, is a use on its own line. Contractor office, which is what the previous owner came for, and they spoke of, says that it's for the, an office, storage and sale of construction materials, supplies and equipment, including plumbing, electrical. Clearly, that's a contractor's office, and I agree that this would be a less intensive use, but that's why this would have to be amended, because those uses are not what the document that was approved say. They went by what I just said, was a contractor's office and yard. And I disagree with you that if I go out to Airport Drive, and that's where most of the contractors are, and their contractor offices, and I see three RVs and a boat, they're gonna be told to remove them, because it's their personal vehicles, and it's not part of their electrical business or their plumbing business.
Well, you probably wouldn't see them, though, if they were inside the buildings, and the doors were down.
Right, but when they're outside, but the point is it's a different use. It's not a contractor.
Because they've agreed not to have any outdoor storage, or any, you know, vehicles parked overnight at all.
But, but do you see, my point was, I'm going by the letter, words are important, of what was agreed to.
Always understood that.
These are different uses, similar and less intensive, but again, not what was agreed. And this board would have to amend that to include what you and this potential buyer wants.
Or simply gave a definition of contractor storage that would fit that. And that's why we came for an interpretation, hoping that with an interpretation, we could get something, and it would be simpler, and these folks could move on.
On both applications, you need to have a hearing, though, so I think it'd be better if you ran them in tandem. Because one, one won't get you anywhere fast. if you ran them in tandem. Because one won't get you anywhere faster.
Yeah, well, personal storage isn't contractor storage.
No.
Right. So it's two different things.
Unless the contractor owns this, what's being stored.
Which was my point originally, why it isn't be the DBA.
I mean, I'm going to be upfront in my experience in the industry, is that while you might have a radio stereo that the contractor, and a refrigerator for his lunch, you typically don't have an accessory personal storage to this extent to contractor storage.
Hi, it's Fran again. To answer your question about the purchaser, this is the only person who's made us an offer. And part of that reason is because the definition that we have to tell potential buyers is a lot more narrow than we thought it was going to be. So yes, it's the only offer we have, it's the only bite we have. And we are in a situation where we are in default of our construction loan, and some other loans that we've had to take. And I just wanted to make you aware that a financial hardship is part of the situation right now. Thank you.
So Rebecca, what would we do at this point? What do we need to do at this point? We need to, do we need to go forward? Do we need to go look? We don't need to go site visit, that's for sure. We all know what is site, where it exists, and what it is.
I mean, we drive past it unless you feel you need to see inside for any reason.
I do have one question. Is there three garages there or five garages?
Right now, it's one large area.
Oh, it's all open up inside?
No, it's not.
You split, you split it?
There's three separate compartments, three separate rooms with, two of them have two doors.
Okay.
So there's five garage doors, three separate, each with their own meter. Yes, there are walls inside.
So I got you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. At this point, I mean, what do we, do we put this on for a public hearing? Do we?
I would, I would ask for the applicant's consent to essentially revive their use variance application, put both of them on for a public hearing.
Is that our only option? Sure.
So we're talking more about what's in the letter?
Well, I think that gives you the option, because I, to be frank, I think there are going to be some difficulties with this fitting within the definition of contractor storage. And this gives you an option if you feel an amendment to your, to the existing use variance would be an appropriate remedy in this situation. I would also ask that the affidavit be supplemented if commercial storage was intended for contractor storage.
I think the commercial storage is being dropped, is it not?
Yeah, but that, but that individual's not here. The person who signed this affidavit, that's the purchaser. And I want to make sure we have the information as accurate as possible.
That's what's making the whole thing difficult, though. The applicant isn't here, and he doesn't own the property.
And he doesn't even have a contract, so he can't be the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
But we're doing all this in what they say.
Basically, he has no right.
Right. If he was a vendee, he could make an application as the vendee, but because he's, there's no contract signed yet, can't do that.
I mean, he can give testimony in support of your application.
Well, of course, absolutely.
No?
No, I don't, I don't have anything.
You've been here a lot more years than all of us, so please, if you've got any insight.
It just seems to me that, you know, I don't know if I'm saying it correctly, or I understand it correctly, that what you're, what you're asking basically is, because it has to be amended, you're getting dual use, is what I see happening, which I'm not saying is bad or good. I'm just saying that that's what you're looking for. You're looking for subcontract, plus, because it looks, seems to me, we're having a piece that might be for a subcontractor, and a piece that's used for storage.
That's correct.
Okay.
The potential buyer is looking possibly, like I said, the whole building for himself. But alternatively, if he doesn't need the whole building, he'd like the ability to rent the portion. And we believe that rental would be to a contractor, but that's what's questioned in the affidavit.
With the stipulations that already are on the property, as far as storing vehicles outside?
Correct. That's correct. And no one's looking to change that. And if you haven't seen the new building, you should come by and-
No, we've seen it. It's nice.
We've seen it. Building looks great.
Good. Glad to hear that.
Quite a change.
Really does look nice. A bit better than what was there, that's for sure.
And you could literally walk there from here, right?
Yeah. John, I would have a recent miss-
So what's the next step?
Give us a change of law, or-
Say again.
Have them resubmit it.
I think a clear, clear definition of request, right?
I mean, going by, you know, what he's saying in the affidavit, what the letters say, yeah, I would think that we would need a resubmit, right? Am I?
You mean amend the existing-
Right.
Use variance? I mean, that's where my thought process is going.
Can we do that?
You can run both at the same time. I think in this case, it probably is in their best interest to do that.
I have done that in other communities successfully, where the question of what a definition meant. I think the struggle we have here is, I personally can't advise you that what is proposed would fit within the industry custom and practice of a contractor's yard. Because when a term is not defined in your code or in a use variance, you go to its ordinary meaning in the industry. I can provide you with an opinion letter on that. But it's pretty much usually where a contractor's office is and materials that are used in accordance with the contractor's business.
Right.
Any personal items or small accessory personal items that you would see in an office.
I would like to see an opinion letter.
So, description of project. Amen proposed use of site to include vehicle, boat, and RV storage. Current approval permits contractor storage with associated office space. No outdoor storage is permitted, no changes to the site are proposed. Isn't that what the letters say, state as well? So why would we need another?
The letters to the neighbors say, the letters for the neighbors was unfair, because it says possibly a boat or recreational vehicle, like one or two things. And the affidavit speaks of an awful lot of storage, of all kinds of vehicles.
RVs, motor, ATBs, motorcycles.
I would like to see an opinion letter from Rebecca, for sure.
If that's the consensus of the board, I'll happily advise on-
I think it's a good idea.
Language interpretation.
Okay. Can you just throw that in a form of motion, please, and we'll vote on it?
Making a motion that you're requesting counsel to offer a legal opinion regarding interpretation of the term contractor storage.
Let's see what you said.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we got that done.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Now, what do you think we're going to need on a timeline?
The applicant had already put in an application to, I think they had worded it as expanding a use variance, but we're really getting to the same point. I don't think they have to, they can submit supplemental materials to supplement that. So the application, they've recently submitted for the interpretation, and the earlier one for the use variance will run parallel with each other. So the public hearing notice needs to note that it's for two separate purposes. And if you want me to take a look at that, I'm happy to.
And scheduling? A month?
Well, yeah, because I still have the struggle that I can't be here at your first meeting each month. So I could probably get you an opinion letter within two weeks. However, if you're going, you know, for me to be present, unfortunately, that is one struggle we have.
Ms. Perisi? Can you come forward, please? You have made mention that you're having some difficulties as far as, okay.
Time is of the essence, yes. We not only have this building to lose, but we have liens on other properties because of it as well. So we have a lot to lose.
Okay. Could you substantiate that in any kind of form, shape, form? Could you get that to us as well?
Yes, I could.
Please. Thank you. Is there anything else that we're going to need? Your letter, her letter? And put this off to the end, should I put it off to the end of next month? To the end of October?
That is your, that is your, I can give you an opinion letter. Unfortunately, though, I'm just unable to be here at your first meeting. So it depends on your preference of having counsel present. This is a difficult property. I sympathize with the situation the owner is in. But we've been kind of bouncing back and forth for a few months. So this really isn't your problem to fix, as far as the issues that are going on. You need to do your duty under the law.
And I won't be here on the first, I won't be here on the 14th, just so that you're aware.
So then we will adjourn this to the second meeting in October.
And will that be the public hearing? Do you want to set that as the public hearing?
Do you think we need further conversation on this, or do you think we can schedule it for a public hearing?
I think you can schedule it for a public hearing.
So, yeah, we'll schedule for a public hearing.
And what date are we?
28th.
I know that doesn't work, unfortunately.
Then we're into November. The November, I'm just asking for everyone, Veterans Day is on the 11th. Are we meeting on the 12th?
Yeah.
November 12th?
No, I'm just throwing out, I just wanted to make sure in case-
We're going to move our meeting a day from Election Day, right?
No, it's Veterans Day, not Election Day.
That's Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, I'm sorry. It's Veterans Day.
Election Day, we're closed. And we're closed on Veterans Day. Those are the two Tuesdays. Are you free on Wednesday?
As of right now, I am. So I will book that.
Well, does that work for you?
We're scheduled for November 12th.
Yes.
Yes.
On our schedule, we're, we have it for the 12th.
Okay.
That'll be on for a public hearing at that time.
November 12th for a public hearing? Yes, Counselor?
Thank you.
Just pass that motion.
Say again, boss?
Just need a motion to set the public hearing.
I'll make the motion. Now we set the public hearing for November 12th at 7:00?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The benefit of that date is if you do have any questions on my opinion letter at the second meeting in October, we could have an attorney-client session to review it.
Perfect.
Great.
Perfect.
You're not going to be able to make that November, that early November?
I actually don't have a Wednesday commitment, so I should be able to make November 12th. I'm putting it on my calendar, and I will move anything else that comes along.
Will that opinion letter be sent to Ms. Jakopowicz also?
Well, no, it'll be attorney-client privilege.
All right. I think, I think we're all set, correct?
I think so.
Gentlemen, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll see you in November, okay?
Yes.
And- Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sign your app, go sign your doc.
Let's have another bird's business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we can shut off the-